will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, just for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you're participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right to know law. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am participating via Zoom. I am participating via Zoom because out of an abundance of caution due to COVID-19, I am in the room by myself and I can hear everyone in the proceedings.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here via Zoom. I can hear everyone, and I'm participating remotely because I am COVID-positive.
Alderman Camo.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Cathy.
Present.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons. Alderman Mulcher.
Here.
You have 12 physically in attendance and two participating virtually via Zoom.
Thank you. Also joining us tonight is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. Well, I wanted to mention to you a few things, some of which are on the agenda here. First, you see on your desk the proposed fiscal 23 budget, this 312 pages. I will be appearing at the Budget Committee, which I believe is scheduled for Monday, to talk with you through more of the details. But overview, the budget is impacted by inflation in a number of areas, electricity, fuel costs, construction, and therefore, some of those costs are up, and we will again talk about the details when I address the Budget Committee, and we can look through it in detail. One thing about presentation, you will notice that every year we are adding more explanation regarding the functions of each division and each department, so that it's a little more accessible to the public. None of that explanation was there a few years back, and we are trying to improve that and expand that every year, so that people can use the budget document as a way to understand the functions of city government, what each department and what each division not only does, but has accomplished and hopes to accomplish in the future year. Madam President, another issue on the agenda is the paving bond. This has been endorsed by the Budget Committee. This will continue the paving plan of action for another five years. As a result of the support of the Board of Aldermen, we've been able to greatly improve the condition of the city streets, and you've heard some of the details, but in prior discussions, but every street in the city is ranked according to a PCI, paving condition index. That has been used by Public Works, those ratings, to decide which streets should be paved when, and so far, we've either paved or preserved through crack sealing or another method, about two-thirds of the, about two-thirds, or more than two-thirds of the city streets. Still, nor work needs to be done. This is a quality of life issue in terms of the appearance, the image of the community, as well as the importance of the transportation for our residents getting around town without breaking axles and encountering other difficulties on our streets. Another item, Madam President, is the police contract. I know Chief Rourke would have probably wanted to be here, but he is ill and out of work today, but the Budget Committee endorsed the contract. We were very thankful that they agreed to the healthcare plan that has been developed by the city. This will save us some money there, and I hope you will follow the recommendation of the Budget Committee and endorse that contract. One thing we've talked about a little bit in the past is the lack of a third member of the Board of Registrawers. You'll see here that there's the nomination of Bill Grady, which will provide partisan balance. I need to give credit to Alderwoman Trish Cle. This is not an easy position to fill, and Bill Grady is a resident of Ward III, and Trish was able to contact him, and he was very enthusiastic and put himself forward to serve, so I want to thank him for his willingness, and Trish for coming up with a very good idea. And finally, I've got to give Alderman O'Brien yet more kudos regarding his efforts up in the legislature. So you will recall that the legislature broke its legal obligation to pay 35% of pension costs for cities and towns. Alderman O'Brien has been trying to restore a portion of that through some series of miracles. He got it through the House, floor fights, close votes, reconsiderations, on and on and on.
It was statesmanship.
It's the Cambridge, well, I call him the Tip O'Neill of Nashua. So that bill was tabled in the Senate, so Alderman O'Brien did not give up and attached the same provision as an amendment through another floor fight, winning by four votes, attached it to a different bill, I forget what the subject of the bill is. So it's now going to go back to Conference Committee, where the Senate and House will discuss, and those in the legislature can provide better detail than I, but we'll discuss how to resolve the differences between the two versions of that bill, and hopefully, the Conference Committee will agree to Alderman O'Brien's amendment, and if so, it would benefit the city to the tune of $2 million a year. So thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for all of your efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And with that, I will conclude, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to your remarks to the mayor, Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I want to correct something that the mayor had said. Mr. Grady is now in Ward II because of redistricting. But yes, I did bring his name forward, just kind of as a side note. When I first met Mr. Grady, he posed a whole list of questions to me, and my answer wasn't good enough. It was, "But why do you feel that way?" And he tested me to no end. We are in opposite parties, and we have grown to have great mutual respect. We don't always agree on anything, but I really thought that as a constitutional person and so on, that he would be perfect for that position, and when I recommended him to the mayor, you know, I felt very confident in doing so. And because he was no longer in Ward III, I didn't feel that there was any kind of conflict going on there and so on. And for those who did not have the privilege of watching Representative O'Brien speak, it was quite a pleasure, and if we could have, he would have gotten a standing ovation. There were a lot of great jobs as he walked off from being in the well. It was brilliant, and thank you so much for continuing to do this. So, thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, maybe Alderman O'Brien, over on the Senate side, I didn't catch it, were there any representatives of the Senate from Nashua that voted to table your first bill?
I'm not 100% sure. There's two senators. I know one senator did not, perhaps maybe the other senator, but I can't confirm. But at this particular time, what will happen, I can give you just a brief history. It's like the mayor referred to as a committee of conference, members from the Senate and members from the House, and I'm hoping to get appointed to the committee of conference to push it through. But it can, in the worst case scenario, be voted down in a committee of conference. I'm hoping that it isn't. Again, a lot of cities and towns, this bill is particularly backed from New Hampshire municipal associations who benefit a lot of municipalities within our state. So hopefully, our friends in the Senate listen to their municipal leaders and listen to their taxpayers. But sometimes people just don't listen.
Well, my fingers are crossed that the senators representing Nashua would side with Alderman O'Brien, Representative O'Brien.
You would think, you would hope.
Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
Just a question to the mayor regarding that 320-page George R. Martin edition of the city budget. For people who don't want...
312.
312. Okay, so maybe it's just J.K. Rowling. People who don't want the giant paper version of it, will they be able to get that online to PDF?
They will, yes. It will definitely be online.
I highly recommend that version.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that John Griffin's brute, Cheryl, and a number of others in the finance, takes a long time and a lot of work to put the book together that you're looking at. So kudos to them, and I have numerous meetings with the mayor and the division directors to formulate this, and then we will be starting our reviews with division directors next week. But I just want you to appreciate the number of hours that go into preparing this book.
Anyone else? Okay. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings.
None.
Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Kevin Burgess, Chairman of the Board of Fire Commission, regarding Resolution R. 2221 to recommend final passage, from Alderman John Cathy, liaison report from the Nashua Senior Activity Center Board of Directors, from Matt Sullivan, Community Development Director, and Camille Correa, Transit Ministerator, regarding ordinance O. 2212, authorizing a stop sign on Garden Street and establishing a portion of Garden Street as a one-way in an easterly direction, from James Jerry, Municipal and Property Director, and Linda Kennedy, Supervisor of the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration, regarding 2021 equalization ratio for the city of Nashua, from Lisa Fodo, Director of Public Works, regarding the referral from the Board of Aldermen on Resolution R. 2220, from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public, and from Matt Sullivan, Community Development Director, regarding the referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed Resolution R. 2223 relative to the adoption of the Nashua Arts and Cultural Plan.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have six people that have signed up, and the first is Kevin Rourke.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Kevin Rourke, Chief of Police. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Tonight in front of you is the collective bargain agreement between the National Police Commission and the Nashville Patrolmen's Union. The Police Commission and I feel that this is a fair and reasonable contract. This contract was negotiated in the presence of City Attorney Bolton and Director Kleiner. We knew that the city's major emphasis was on the HMO deductible give-back, which was not an issue with this union. Two years ago, the city started with the contract strategy meetings to switch to HSA because of the savings the city would have. We attended these meetings and listened. This union started to jump on board back then. A large majority of the members have already switched over to the HSA plan prior to this agreement. These are the men and women who are your backbone of this police department, and ultimately, the public safety of our great city. The same city, according to Wallet Hub, is recognized as the third safest city in the country. These officers have been through a lot the past couple of years. I will only mention a few of the issues. They have been on the forefront of the recent challenges that have faced police agencies across the country. Yes, even here in Nashua, New Hampshire. They were getting blamed for things that were happening elsewhere in the country that they had no control over. We have all had to deal with the pandemic, but these men and women still came to work every day and provided the same service to their community that they did before the pandemic. They handled themselves with a great amount of professionalism. I can personally tell you, it was not easy to watch, because I knew they carried a lot of anxiety with them coming to work every day and responding to calls. Many of them live with elderly parents, pregnant wives, and people with existing health conditions. They were also fully aware that there were other police officers in the country dying from this virus on a daily basis. They were afraid of catching the virus and bringing it home to their families and maybe infecting some of the previously stated individuals. They did not once complain. In fact, they did their job with honor and integrity and knew that this is what they signed up for. These are the type of men and women you have working at this police department. They're extremely brave. I am so proud and honored to be their chief. I am hoping tonight that you will support them and vote yes on the contract that is in front of you. Thank you all for your continued support.
Thank you, Chief. Hope you feel better.
Thank you. You sound great, huh?
Yeah. Charles Emmons. I believe some people that signed up were actually at the first meeting. Fred Daniels, first meeting. Stan Tremblay was at the first meeting. Okay, Jen Morton, also at the first meeting. Lindsay Rinaldi. Come on, Lindsay.
Hi, folks. My name is Lindsay Rinaldi. I'm at 37 June Street in Lowell. However, I grew up here in Nashua, went to Nashua schools, and I'm thrilled to be back here and serving as the current Chair of the Nashua Arts Commission, as well as my full-time job as the Executive Director of the nonprofit Nashua Community Music School. I'm appearing before you today to request your strong favorable approval of the Nashua Arts and Culture Plan. My understanding, it's come before the Board of Aldermen a few weeks ago and has since gone out to two different committees, both of which, I'm thrilled to say, came back with a favorable recommendation for the Board of Aldermen's consideration. The Nashua Arts and Culture Plan is one of the most important things that the Nashua Arts Commission is charged to do as part of our charter. It's to give our city a direction for the arts and culture that exists, to maintain the beauty that is here now, and to develop and create new and exciting ideas that will enrich our community for years to come. Within the Nashua Arts and Culture Plan, all these sorts of wonderful ideas have been very carefully and strategically thought out and organized into a series of four different top goals. What's even more wonderful is that the second goal of our plan is collaboration. So we said, well, why do we have to wait until the plan is in business to be able to do that? So one of the things that we thought was so important was to make sure that we were collaborating alongside the Imagine Nashua Project, the Long Range Strategic Plan for the city of Nashua, as we were creating the Nashua Arts and Culture Plan as it sits before you. So there's a wonderful cohesive flow between the Long Range Strategic Plan, particularly the Arts and Culture Section, that you folks have already approved, into the Nashua Arts and Culture Plan for the next five years. So there's a natural flow, a natural collaboration. It was so important for us as the Arts Commission to not only have the full Arts Commission's approval of this plan and enthusiastic support, but to also have the support of our mayor, and of course, the support of our Board of Aldermen.
Thirty seconds.
So I ask you today, when this comes up on the agenda, please vote an enthusiastic yes, so we can move this direction forward for the beautification of our city. Our collaboration, part of our plan, can start now with all of you.
Thank you. And there's no one else? I don't see anyone on Zoom. Okay. Communications requiring final approval. Communication has been received from Steve Bolton, Corporation Counsel, regarding confidential attorney-client communication. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to authorize Mayor Donches to execute the settlement agreement for the purposes therein contained by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Will the clerk please, Alderman Cathy?
I just have a quick P.I. If, and I'm not saying that I do, if an Alderman had a question about this, would, for future reference, would we have to go into a non-public to talk about it and answer questions?
That would certainly be my recommendation.
Okay. Just want to know for future reference. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and 0 nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the award of a multi-year contract in excess of $1 million for bio solids management.
Alderman Camo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and approve the three-year contract in an amount not to exceed $2,940,000, with resource management incorporated of Holderness, New Hampshire, for management of bio solids at the wastewater treatment facility. Funding will be through Department 169 Wastewater. Fund wastewater. Account classification 54. Property services by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and 0 nays.
And that motion carries. Petitions.
There is none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Appointments by the mayor. To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed William Grady of 14 Tinker Road, Nashua, to the Board of Registrawers for a term to expire May 1, 2025, and Richard Widu as an alternate member to the Conservation Commission of 23 Syracuse Road, Nashua, for a term to expire May 1, 2025, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
Alderman Cathy.
A question for clarification. On the city's website, it does not declare the party that the current members of the Board of Registrawers belong to. So could we get a confirmation that it is two and one, or one and two, however the breakdown is, based on the charter? Because I couldn't see it, so...
Mayor, do you have that information?
So we have Mr. Grady here, who is a registered Republican.
Okay.
There is one registered Democrat, and the third person, I'm not sure if she is Democrat or, she's undeclared. So there's a third person who's undeclared. So one of each category.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anything further? Seeing none, I will refer those to the Personnel Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 6, 2022 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
There is none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R. 2220, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $37,500,000 to fund the second five-year phase of a 10-year pavement management project.
Alderman Sullivan.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 22020 by roll call.
The motion is for final passage by roll call pursuant to Charter Sections 49 and 56B. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and 0 nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 22-20 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 2221, changing the purpose of up to $152,030 of unexpected bond proceeds from the fire department pumper trunk and aerial ladder truck purchases to infrastructure improvements to the Nashua Municipal Fire Alarm System.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22021 by roll call pursuant to Charter Sections 49 and 56B.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and 0 nays.
And that motion carries, and Resolution 2221 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 2223, relative to the adoption of the Nashua Arts and Cultural...
My goodness, excuse me. Relative to the adoption of the Nashua Arts and Cultural Plan.
Alderman Cle.
Yes, I motion for final passage of R-22023 by roll call, and may I make a brief statement?
Yes.
Thank you. As you heard Ms. Rinaldi's enthusiasm, I can attest to the enthusiasm of the entire committee. The commission is just a great group of people, but the one thing that I'm not sure was really addressed was that they, much like Imagine Nashua, they put this out to the public, and they held public hearings, and they got positive and negative comments. Even those were adopted and put into this. There was one comment that kind of stuck in my head was that, why are we concentrating on dollars and cents when we should be concentrating on the arts and so on? And that was because they did look at how this could bring in dollars and cents, as well as the public and so on. And I think that was really important. They set it up in goals, and each of the goals has long-term, short-term, and medium-term type of things. So I cannot say enough wonderful things about it. I came in as they were finishing, so I had absolutely nothing to do with it. They're just an incredible, incredible group of people, so I'm sure that we're going to give it a good thumbs up. So thank you, Madam, I mean, Madam President.
Alderman Cathy.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for clarification, this is preceding what would then later come as a strategic plan, like the library is doing, right? This is more of a bird's eye, and then we're going to have a more thorough approach, as I understand it. I just wanted to make clarification on that.
Alderman Cle.
I'm not sure it's necessarily the same as the library, where the library is going to be looking into all of their needs and putting that forward. This is just like Imagine Nashua. This is just kind of where the city can go. It's a five-year plan. Not everything is going to happen in it, but it moves us forward. It says, it already says, some of the things that we need to look at, how we need to build a cohesive art environment, which I think we really do have, but it helps bring it together. It talks to it and so on. Unlike the library, which will be coming back with a plan, a strategic plan, they need HVAC, and they need to clean this up, and they need to do that. That's not going to happen so much with this. This is just like Imagine Nashua is. It's the five-year plan. It's what the community wants for the city. Doesn't necessarily mean it's always going to happen 100%, but it's a goal to look forward. And the nice thing about this particular one is they took those goals and they put it into a couple of exercises. And that's...
And that's, so this is kind of, I don't want to say it's a strategic plan because it's a strategic plan you're going to accomplish. These are hopes to accomplish, these are dreams, these are exactly what Imagine Nashua is. It's when they make the decision up in the planning board that you're part of. You look to it and say, is this within the plan of the city? So when we make decisions and so on. I think one of the things that we've brought up, and I can talk to it because it's in my ward, which is the Greeley Park Band Shell. That was one of the items, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen. It's some of the things we need to look forward to, so.
I appreciate that. I'll be a little more pointed to make it easier. Using the band shell as an example, that's one of their goals, bird's eye. But then they would come with a plan further to say, we would like to fix it. Here's my, here's what it needs, here much is, how much it's going to cost. And that's what I meant, like, there'll be, there'll be a more dialed-in plan. And this is more so for the public benefit than my own, because I was in the other committee. But, so this is just say, this is what we are shooting for, this is what we would like. Later on, we'll come back and say, this is what we need definitively to achieve said goals that were in this plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, I guess I, yes.
Okay.
I see Ms. Rinaldi's head shaking like one of those dolls, so, yes. So to add to that, yes. The thing that I did not want to fall into the trap of, they're not going to necessarily come up with the money or the funding or so.
No, no, no.
So I just want to make sure that you understand that, that yes, they're going to look towards how we can accomplish these particular goals, and that is what their job is, to work within it. So yes, I apologize.
No, that's okay, thank you.
All set, Alderman Cathy?
All set.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. So, yeah, absolutely, this does not authorize them to just go build a band shell or any of the other things that are in it. It's, it doesn't authorize money. All that stuff has to come through us at some point anyway. But for me, and I mentioned it in the PDC Committee when it came to us, I love this plan, I think it's a good, good to have goals, and I think it's good to have these type of goals. Any city, you know, if you look at a city as a pie chart, you know, arts and cultural takes a piece of that. And I think it's important for a city like us to continue to really make sure that we care about the arts and the culture of the city. It's an important piece, along with all the other things that make up a city, whether it's downtown businesses, or revenue in the shopping malls, all that stuff. It's a piece of Nashua, and I think it's a great plan, and I thank her for bringing it forward, and for her team for working on it. And I look forward to voting yes on it.
Alderman Sullivan.
A simple question. The reason that we're making a resolution around a strategic plan, does that signify that the city endorses this? That the city says we're going to move ahead with that? Is that essentially what this means? Is that why we're doing that?
I think as we do with the Imagine Nashua, it's a, it's a goal to shoot for, but it doesn't necessarily, that's why I keep trying to say, doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to hit and attain every little item that's on there. But it's a hope, I mean, it would be wonderful if we, if we, if we were able to do all of those things. I don't believe, if you look through the plan, that they necessarily put anything specific. They talk about how to work with all of the different groups, and how to make them more cohesive as a, as a unit, and even types of fundraising. How can we bring more into this community? How can we bring everybody into the fold and work together as one? I brought up the band shell just because it's in, in my ward. And that's something that's always been kind of a thorn in the side of some of the people that are, they're doing. I would love to see it happen, but, and I think that there's already discussions. I think, if I'm not mistaken, there was something already brought up on the Planning Committee, that there has been already talk about that. So this is kind of moving forward. So when that would come forward, they would see that it's part of the Imagine Nashua or the Arts Commission. So it would give the Planning Board something to hook into that say, we're not just willy-nilly this, this is kind of the plan of moving the city forward. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
So I'll endorse this, because in terms of identifying a plan and organizing priorities for the city, that's very important for the city. As somebody very involved in different art organizations over the years, collaboration can be the most successful, it can lead to the most successful events. I know Positive Street Art, one of the earliest collaborations with Northern Ballet, really changed the city's perspective on hip-hop dancing, because it was two different arts organizations collaborating, bringing their own different gifts, and they're both incredible dancers that really created a whole new way of looking at things. And there is a lot of benefit to that, economically, at events and activities, and then culturally as well. And that's just one example, the list goes on indefinitely. But when you have all these different organizations, and Nashua is a very cultural city, so that's a strength, but it also means they get in each other's way a lot, because they are duplicating effort, or they're looking for the same resources and don't realize that somebody else already has them. Having the Nashua Arts Commission showing leadership in that particular area is something long sought after by the community. Having somebody who's willing to just make a list of who the artists in the city are, what the events are, those are objectives on the plan that I think we should definitely be supporting. Because as we start to come out of the pandemic, and as Nashua starts to reemerge and invest more in destination activities and in events and performances of all levels, whether it's local events venues and, you know, garage bands playing in coffee shops, or performing arts events at the National Arts Center, making sure that we have some kind of organization to it in collaboration and coordination, it just makes a lot of sense. So I'll endorse this, I'll support it, and I encourage everyone else on the board to do as well. Thank you.
But will you support it enthusiastically? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I will support this enthusiastically, unlike Alderman Lopez over here. I think it's a great plan, it came to PDC, we talked about it in pretty good depth. And one of the things about arts and culture is it helps keep the city, not just a destination city, but a place that people want to move to and live in. And you can see how the investment from the Performing Arts Center is already paying off, it's not even completed yet, with its neighbor Surf already completing a renovation and facelift. So the more we bring vibrant things to the city, the more we invest through arts and culture and other aspects of development. I think we're going to see a lot of private investors, private companies investing in themselves, like we saw with MTs downtown. Thank you.
Alderman Cathy.
I'd like to mildly enthusiastically endorse the plan.
Alderman Cleese.
I just, I do want to just add one more thing. One of the importance, when the people were speaking about 14 Court Street, it was something that I didn't even realize, and it moved me that we have students that walk from Mount Pleasant, again, in my ward, that go to the 14 Court Street and can watch a show. And as a child, that was something that brought me to love the theater. And I think that's what this plan does, is it puts all of those groups together. So as Alderman Lopez said, we're not duplicating efforts. We're working together rather than trying to vie for the same type of thing. And a perfect example of what the commission has done, and kind of what this working together is, is the grant. That Nashua is one of, I think, of 16 that were given the NEA grant, and I believe the only one in New England, if I'm not mistaken. That's, that's quite a, that's quite a feat. And it's because of having plans like this. It's because of all that we, that we do here in Nashua as far as the arts community. We stand out, and we will bring people here, and we will bring people here who want to have, I can see people even online kind of shaking their head too. It's something that's just so important, and this plan helps move us forward. So I am definitely enthusiastic. I don't think I quite have the energy that Ms. Rinaldi has, but, and I also want to add one more thing. While Ms. Rinaldi is the face of this plan and so on, there were a lot of really hard-working people, and she'll be the first one to tell you that behind the scenes, that painstakingly, even where they would put a box of words and so on, so that it grabbed the people, and it meant something, and not just a piece of paper with words on it. So thank you.
Alderman Camo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I haven't heard any opposition to the plan, so I will stop short of making an official motion to move the question, but I suggest that, you know, it seems that we're all in support, so I look forward to voting.
Okay. The motion was to move the question. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Technically, I didn't make the motion.
Oh, technically, you didn't make the motion?
I will stop short of making the motion.
Okay, I got you, got you, okay. Or we could.
You can still vote.
We could still vote. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is for final passage of Resolution 22-23 by roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Alderman Moran.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
With great enthusiasm, yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Mild enthusiastically, yes.
Alderman Tebow.
100% yes.
Alderman Mouchier.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 22-23 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 2224, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Police Commissioners and the Nashua Police Patrolmen's Association from July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2026.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 22024 by roll call, and I'd like to briefly speak to it.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this is perhaps one of the best contracts I've come, see, come out of the police department. It's very reasonable numbers, they've taken the insurance that we asked them to take. And this is a group of people that keep us safe every single day. And, and I get all, as liaison, I get all the police reports every day, and I'll tell you, we are safer every day because of these people. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Enthusiastic, yes.
Alderman Dowd.
I guess I'd add enthusiastically, yes, too.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Enthusiastically, 100%, yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Mouchier.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 22-24 is declared duly adopted.
Would you like the second reading of Resolution R. 2225?
Sure.
Second reading of Resolution R. 2225, authorizing the mayor to apply for and expend the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Program funds for fiscal year 2023.
Without objection, I'm going to re-refer Resolution 2225 to the Human Affairs Committee, as we have not received the notification of funding from HUD. So we'll send it back to committee. Once HUD decides what they're giving us, then the, the resolution can be amended in committee and then sent back to us. Alderman Lopez?
I was just curious why we wouldn't just table it, because our next Human Affairs Committee is in, like, June? So we would have a Board of Aldermen meeting first, and we've already talked about it.
Well, I'd rather not keep it at the full board, because if it's going to get amended, it should be amended in the committee.
Okay. Like I said, I was asking for educational purposes, so I appreciate the answer.
Alderman Cathy?
While it's here, just a quick question. So I understand this correctly, we're applying for a grant that we assume we're going to get, and then spend those monies?
Not, not necessarily.
Okay, with that in mind, what happens if we don't get the money? That we, we do need the money, that's the assumption, right? So then what would happen from that point on, just for my own educational purposes?
Nashua is an entitlement community, so we will get funding from HUD. There are other parts of the state that get funding from HUD through, like, like the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, or some other organization that would get the funding and disperse it. Nashua is an entitlement community, so we get the funding directly, and we, the Human Affairs Committee and this board dole that money out to the nonprofits and city projects. So we, we've been getting this for as long as I can remember. Decades and decades.
Can I follow up to that?
Sure.
Thank you. So what I hear you saying is, we're getting money, it's just a matter of how much, and then if they add on any provisions about how we spend the money, because that's also what comes along with grants too, as well, right?
Yeah.
But generally, we're going to get the money.
We're going to get the money.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep, you bet. Okay, so I'm going to re-refer that to the Human Affairs Committee.
Second reading of Resolution R. 2226, authorizing First Amendments to Developer Agreements for Bronstein Redevelopment.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 2226 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage by roll call, discussion on that motion. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 2226 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 2228 authorizing the City of Nashville to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Manchester regarding a welfare software application.
Alderman Goveya?
Thank you, Madam President, I move for final passage of R. 22-028 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage by roll call, discussion. Alderman Cleese?
Thank you. This came to the Finance Committee and the exciting thing about this is that they're actually buying the software from us. This isn't something worth spending. We've created this and we're spending it. And when I asked, would there be other communities? And if I'm not mistaken, it's, the charge that we gave them was fifty percent of the cost of us creating this. And when I asked if there were other communities that were interested, there are other communities. So potentially, this could become a profit type of thing, or at least a break even. I think it's very exciting that Nashville has created something that another community, especially a community as large as Manchester. It speaks volumes to our RT department and I was quite excited to hear about this in Finance. And I was thrilled to be sitting in the chairman's seat at that time, so.
Alderman Lopez?
To Alderman Cleese or possibly Attorney Bolton, can Manchester sell our copy of it once we sell it to them?
We've provided against that.
Excellent.
Alderman Kathy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just for my own, again, edification. Memorandum of Understanding is, I don't know how to say this, just short of a contract?
It's another word for the same thing.
Okay. Oh, that's good.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I've always been a proponent of collaboration with another entity to save money for the city. So since it's a positive influence of money coming into us as budget chair, I appreciate that. The, but the other thing is, I think there's more that we could do over the long run, sharing things with Manchester where we could both benefit from collaboration together. I know collaboration's not usually recognized north of Manchester. So I'm glad that we can do this with Manchester.
Alderman Camo?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Alderman Cleese said a lot of the things that I was going to say. It was nice in Finance Committee to vote on something for once that brought money in instead of sending money out. And I would also like to thank Jason Tuohy and the IT team. It was impressive, the presentation that they gave. It's nice to hear that we had some city employees that developed something that was so good and so impressive that other municipalities around wanted to get on board and be a part of that. So kudos to him and his team and it's just a great thing all around.
Agreed. Further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is for final passage, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 2228 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
There is none.
New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution R. 2229 authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to borrow an amount not to exceed $6,900,000 through the issuance of bonds and/or a loan through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services State Revolving Loan Fund for the wastewater treatment plant dry well valve replacement project.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Moran, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 23rd, 2022.
First reading of Resolution R. 2230 relative to the transfer of $25,000 from Department 194 contingency account 70100 general contingency to Department 109 Civic and Community Activities, accounting classification 56 outside agencies for the purpose of providing funding to the Nashville Association for the Elderly.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Camo, Alderman Goveya, Alderman Kathy, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 2231 authorizing the City of Nashville to enter into contracts with the Sohegan Valley Transportation Collaborative, Nashville Community College, Riviera University, Town of Hudson and Town of Merrimack for transit services.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Kathy, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 2232 approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Education and the Nashville Teachers Union, Local 1044 AFT, AFL-CIO, Unit D, Food Service Workers from September 1st of 2021 through August 31st of 2024.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Camo, I knew I'd get you, Alderman Tebow, and myself.
You know, we're so similarly good-looking.
I agree.
Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 2233 relative to the acceptance of $283,031 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Community Health Grant Activity Cooperative Agreement, COAG, for emergency response.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Alderman Lopez?
I'd like to make a motion for a sec, to suspend the rules for a second reading of R. 22033 by roll call and like to speak to it.
Alderman Lopez?
So this was presented to us last night as a discussion item at the Human Affairs Committee, the committee that it would ordinarily have been referred to through typical process. And to summarize, Director Bagley was approached Thursday of last week and asked if she could have an answer by Wednesday on a grant that was essentially applied for by the city and authorized by this board last year in February. So what's happening is sometimes grants take a long time at the state to be approved, to be refined to the point where they're putting requests out. Alderman Cleese also pointed out that sometimes additional money becomes available towards the end of the year and so in the state, they put out grant or they do grant requests or communicate with different recipients. So because the timeframe on this is so narrow, and there is another one as well where our typical committee process wouldn't be responsive to it, we were trying to push for a second reading tonight. The Human Affairs Committee has already met twice this month. We could do a third meeting, but it would be just for this event, or just for this grant. And we were able to vet it at the committee meeting last night as well. The grants are for reimbursement for things such as staffing that was required for COVID-19 and then also to continue to support different programs we have for substance misuse and mental health and emergency planning programs that the Public Health Department is organizing. So I would encourage the board, definitely, I know it's a little bit unorthodox to do a second reading, and I have reached out to our Legislative Affairs Assistant to see if we can move our meeting so that it's not before all of these things happen. If our meeting is in between the next, the two Board of Aldermen meetings instead of outside of them every month, we may be able to do this a little more effectively in the future.
Alderman Kathy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have a, I want to call it a procedural question. Alderman Lopez, you said that this popped up last night. I'm wondering if, as a legislative body, we would want to wait so the public sees it on an agenda and they can weigh in. But on the other hand, maybe it's been so long that they've had enough time to weigh in, so I just kind of wanted to put that on the table, discuss, just for my own clarity. Because you said it popped up last night, so that means, did someone come in the room and say, hey, we should talk about this? Or was it on the agenda where public knew it was there and it was sort of like a last-minute thing?
Alderman Lopez?
If I can clarify, it was brought to my attention, actually, on Friday by Director Bagley. And my focus was making sure that the committee members were aware of it so that we could vet it previous to this. So I had asked her if she would bring it to us as a discussion item and send a memo to the committee members so the committee members at least were aware of what was being requested. And then in the committee meeting, we attached the memo to that. So it was introduced on the record last night and then as an agenda item tonight because initially, its first reading and first exposure, other than back in February of 2021, would have been tonight.
Right.
Alderman Kathy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just again, for my own edification, what happens if we wait? You said it's crunch time, what, can you give me a date? What are we looking at here?
The, we would not be meeting again in time for the first one that we're doing tonight right now. I believe Alderman Cleese has an additional one, which is in a similar situation, but we would at least have time to convene a third Human Affairs Committee if we needed to. But our next Human Affairs Committee is June 12th.
I'm asking for, what is, you said that Bagley wanted, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
You said Director Bagley asked for a response effective ASAP?
We have to be willing to accept it.
Right. Is there a drop-dead date that she's looking at that we need to pass this by for her own sake?
I think Alderman Moran.
Alderman Moran?
Well, I was in, is Director Bagley here? Someone from the public?
She is here. Director Bagley, would you mind? Thank you. It's not uncommon for us to get grants at the last minute, they have to get to governor and council before a certain date and...
I'm not against it, I just, clarification.
Yep, okay.
Yes, good evening and thank you, President Wiltshire. So the two resolutions that are before you this evening are for fiscal year '22. And so the state will like for us to be able to receive these funds before June 30th so that we can start, so that we can apply the funding for fiscal year '22 in this fiscal year. If this is not approved tonight, it won't be approved until fiscal year '23 and it's fiscal year '22 funds. So there's actually two things that we talked about. The one that we spoke of last night is another grant award that'll be coming through and that's the larger one, that's over a million dollars, and that one is the one that we talked about last night. But these two were already on your agenda. And the request for the second read was so that we could get it passed through for fiscal year '22.
Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it.
Alderman Moran?
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Director, were one of these, or maybe it was the million-dollar one, were those, or any of these, held up by the executive council? Is that why it's putting pressure on us?
So these two resolutions for tonight were the ones where the funding came in earlier in 2021 and it was delayed in being dispensed out to the contractors. And so we just got a notification of the $60,000 and then the $283,000 that Alderman Cleese is going to speak on. That notification, those just came out a week ago. And so, yes, those were held up. The $1 million is a contract that we will be submitting that's due by July, that's due by May 23rd.
Thank you, Director. And I just, when, I would just like to express my dismay with the executive council and especially our executive councilor, David Wheeler, for holding this up and not getting the funding in a quick and manner to us when it's evidence-based stuff that needs to come back to the city. And I watched, re-watched and listened to those executive council committees and his excuses for holding this up was ridiculous. And I just want to express my gratitude for Director Bagley for pushing this through and talking, working with Alderman Lopez. The people of the city don't deserve something like this to happen, especially when it comes to mental health and substance issues. Thank you.
Alderman Camo?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Through you to Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Where the motion before us is to suspend the rules, my question to you would be, is there any benefit to waiting for the committee? Or do you feel like what you talked about last night was enough that you're comfortable moving forward with a second reading tonight?
I'm comfortable with it, I think the committee members are as well. That was the intention by making sure that we did at least have a presentation and some discussion on it.
Follow-up?
Yes.
Since the motion right now is just to suspend the rules and we're not on final passage yet, I'd like to move the question.
Okay. Motion to move the question.
Thank you.
Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yep.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
The motion? Before us? There's no motion before us. Suspend the rules, yeah.
Do you wish me to call that roll?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yep.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution R. 2233 relative to the acceptance of $283,031 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Community Health Grant Activity Cooperative Agreement, COAG, for emergency response.
Alderman Lopez?
I'd like to make a recommendation for final passage by roll call.
Motion is for final passage, Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I just want to state that over the years that I've been here, this is money coming in to the city for public health and the sooner we get it in, the better for the citizens of Nashville. I've never, I know these types of moving these things forward quickly on many things is sometimes a question, especially if we're spending money. But in this instance, I've never heard anybody complain about it and this is critically important that we get this passed and get the money in our hands before the state loses it.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President. Just one thing, I don't think we should be moving questions when three or four hands are up, for one thing. Second, mental health-wise, we need this money. I don't know why we're even questioning the fact that, that we're even questioning this. This is money that's given to us by grants we can give, by the state, federal, whatever. We can give to people that need it here in the city. I don't see why we shouldn't just pass this unanimously right now.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you, Madam President. One of the questions that I asked last evening was, did we have to put up any funds from the city? And the answer was no. This was one hundred percent grant as is. So in essence, this is free money for us to be able to do these functions. And the next one, without going ahead too fast, is of the similar ilk, but it's COVID-19 immunization. I think it's important that when it's offered to us, and yes, I agree with what Alderman Moran had said relative to the executive council. The executive council had, if we all remember, it was in the news, they said no to all the money that came through and our governor was quite upset. And through much wrangling, we finally got them to approve it. But in the meantime, they kind of sat on it and sat on it and sat on it. And the last minute, they throw it to the communities, the municipalities and say, take care of this and do everything, when they know we have a certain process that we have to follow. Having to take this out of order is disruptive to the public, it's disruptive to our process, and it doesn't make anybody look good. It was shameful, as Alderman Moran had pointed out, the excuses that were given for it, it made no sense. There were no strings attached really to it. Maybe they said you can't use it for this or that, but it was going for a good cause and we need this type of money to continue to come into our community so that we can move forward, so thank you.
Alderman Dowd?
Much like my colleague, I'm not going to move the question, but I think we're in a position where everybody, or at least the majority, are going to be in favor of this, so I suggest that we move along.
No further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 2233 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 2234 relative to the acceptance of $60,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Community Health Grant Activity COVID-19 Immunization Activities.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Kathy, Alderman Tebow, and myself.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Alderwoman Kelly, thank you. Alderman Cleese?
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to suspend the rules for a second reading of R. 22-034 by roll call and for the same reasons that were given previously. by roll call and for the same reasons that were given previously. Thank you.
Motion is to suspend the rules. Discussion on that motion? Okay, would the clerk, excuse me, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 a's and zero n's.
That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution R 2234 relative to the acceptance of $60,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Community Health Grant Activity COVID-19 Immunization Activities.
Alderman Cleaver.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R 22-034 by roll call and for the same exact reasons that we're doing this, so.
You've heard the motion, discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 a's and zero n's.
That motion carries. Resolution 2234 is declared duly adopted. There being no objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for the introduction of Resolution 22-35 that was received after the agenda was prepared.
First reading of Resolution R 2235 relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget for the City of Nashua General Enterprise Special Revenue and Grant Funds.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cathy, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading, I will send that to the Budget Review Committee. Good luck.
I was hoping we suspend the rules and pass it.
That would be very controversial.
New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance O 2215 establishing a Greeley Park Advisory Committee.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Goveya, Alderman Cathy, Alderman Tebow. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of ordinance O 2216 clarifying animal prohibitions in parks.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Tebow, Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of ordinance O 2217 establishing a Housing Trust Fund Committee.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Given its first reading.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderwoman Kelly, sorry. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for general public comment. No one has signed up in the chamber? Okay, well, the process is, you know the process, Ms. Gare, that you sign up.
I'm used to going Zoom at home, so I wasn't aware that would be signed up before the meeting.
Okay, we'll let you speak. You have three minutes.
Best scare 111 East Hobart Street. My husband and I raised the Save Women's Sports flag on the citizen flagpole on the Nashua City Hall Plaza on October 10th, 2020. With the permission from the city, it was supposed to stay up a week. But Mayor Donches had my flag removed in less than 24 hours, claiming the message "Woman equals Adult Human Female" on the flag is offensive and allowing women to have their own sports violates state law. Attorney Steve, Attorney Steve Bolton's response to my appeal to have my flag put back up, he cited the court case Shertliff versus Boston as justification for having my flag stay down. I warned Mayor Donches and Attorney Bolton repeatedly that the Shertliff case was being heard. The Supreme Court was going very badly for the city of Boston. But they ignored me and continued to allow community groups to fly flags on the citizen flagpole. Last week, the Supreme Court, the U.S. Supreme Court justices voted unanimously in favor of Shertliff and said it was viewpoint discrimination to deny him the right to fly his flag when Boston had allowed all other flags that were requested to be flown. Attorney Richard Lehman sent a letter on my behalf to Attorney Bolton calling out the unconstitutionality of what Mayor Donches did and requested that I be allowed to fly my flag again. The City of Nashua's response was to remove the webpage for the Citizen Flagpole program from the city website. And this is an acknowledgement of wrongdoing by Mayor Donches and the City of Nashua. Mayor Donches acted unconstitutionally when he had my flag removed. And I'm delighted the city has finally acknowledged it after a year and a half. I brought my flag to celebrate. And I'm, I'm just really grateful to finally have this right wrong, this wrong put right by having my say. Even if the flag never goes back up, I know it was unconstitutional. And also, I want to say, the mayor said he left, okay, the mayor left the third seat open on the Board of Registars for an extended period of time. He never contacted the Nashua Republican City Committee for any suggestions on who could serve on that committee. But after someone contacted the Attorney General.
30 seconds.
To say that the seat had been left open for such a long time, suddenly the mayor has appointed someone. It seems like quite a coincidence that after all this time, that it was filled after he was being held accountable. Thank you.
Scott McCullough?
I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the.
We need a name and address for the record, Scott.
Yes, my name is Scott McCullough, 49 Congress Street, Apartment 6. I'd like to say a special thanks to Tom Thomas. If I'm saying your name right, hopefully. Thomas, the guy who said about the Best Buddies Walk. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for mentioning about the Best Buddies Walk. Because I would like to know if the mayor's going to, could you guys make a donation and mail it in, please, Mayor? Because I've been waiting to see if you could maybe let me know or I will come down and I will get the check personally. And I will give it to Best Buddies. And if Ben's, Ben Clemmons or anybody on the board would like to donate, you can go, you can go to my page directly on Facebook, Or you can find me, or you can find me on Facebook and donate whatever amount. I'm just asking Board of Alderman if you guys can help me. I greatly appreciate any help. My goal, I want to get these nice earplugs they have, but I have to raise a lot of multitudineros. Please, if Steve Bolton and Mayor Don, Mayor Donches and you guys would like to join us, you guys are welcome to June 11th, Saturday morning, please come on out. Please, if Nashua, if Nashua citizens are listening, you can still register. If you want to register on my team, on the Best Buddies, Best Buddies on the Loose Team. Guys, Best Buddies has saved my life in many ways. It's built my confidence level. It's made me stronger. Before, Best Buddies, I was lonely and now, now I'm part of like, part of a family. And I love Best Buddies and hopefully I'm not making Ben cry. I just get.
30 seconds.
I just get emotional, guys. Thank you. And hopefully, and hopefully the Board of Alderman will support me. If you guys want to write out a check, Mr. Mayor, I can swing by maybe Thursday to pick it up if you.
Can you come, can you come by tomorrow?
I could probably try to.
All right, Thursday?
Thursday's better.
Thursday, yes.
All right.
In any amount that you want.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Ordolano?
Hi, Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Just a couple of things. The Greeley Park Advisory Committee, you know, I understand what you're trying to do here, but I think you should broaden that because I think that that kind of got going when the purchase of the land was happening up on Bartlett Street. And the interest to make, make certain the park is what the citizens want it to be. But I think you have as important an issue going on in Robey Park right now. And you could certainly have a Robey Park Advisory Committee. But more importantly, I think you should just have an overall Park Advisory Committee. I would really like to see that as an oversight committee to DPW. And I think the Conservation Commission should be involved. It's just apparent to me, given the way decisions are made and actions are taken, that they're too singular, too outside of, you know, the public's participation and I. And when things don't go well, you know, we are not a very kind city. Our leadership, I think, is not overly kind to citizens that take different positions than them. So I would like to see that expanded into just a Park Advisory Committee for the City of Nashua. The Animals in the Park ordinance that's going to be referred to committee, I would like you to consider a language change on that in that the Superintendent of Parks and Recs is assigned the responsibility to notice the parks for pet accessibility. Really, we've had a lot of issues with that superintendent position. Very heavy turnover, very short term. I really think that anything written in the name of the superintendent should now be changed over to the Board of Public Works. I think it was at one point. And I think you should consider that now in the language. Also, you know, I was very disappointed to see the city put up such a fight over the Right to Know training that was, you know, remanded by the court for the city to participate in, given what's gone on. And it's just rather amazing to me that the mayor would petition that to the Supreme Court rather than do the training. We've had seven, eight, nine, 10 Right to Know violations that have been found. I know there are more. And it just seems to me when a city has had that much problem, that many problems with the Right to Know law, that it would be reasonable that training is done. I wrote a training memorandum that I gave to you all. And I think that, you know, you have to remember that all of these violations were the responses that came directly from the Nashua legal office. And it's very concerning to me that we can sit here as a board and as a community and say, we don't need any training. And I think the board could have done a lot more to assist in these matters and been much more proactive. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our public comment, period. Oh, come right up.
Good evening. My name is Richard Smart. I am, live at 159 Surles Road. I'm a lifelong city resident. I'm a current resident of Ward 9. I'm here to talk to you about the disc golf course at Robey Park. I learned how to play disc golf while in college in Montana. When I returned home from school, there wasn't a very big community around here. So I started playing disc golf in places like Fitchburg and Devens, Massachusetts. I started playing in places like Amherst, Pelham, Manchester, New Hampshire. In 2017, it became an addiction for me. I have been hooked for a long time. In 2018, I approached the then Superintendent of Parks, Nick Cagiano. And he told me to petition the people of Nashua and send that information to the mayor. We did that in early 2019. At the same time, we established the Gate City Disc Golf Organization. Our sole goal is to bring disc golf to the city of Nashua. This project was actually approved by the Board of Public Works in August of 2021. We worked closely with Alderman Melissa Golia, Alderman Cleaver. We held nine public meetings. We went on several walkthroughs of many properties throughout the city. New Hampshire has 71 courses, 36 of which are 18 whole courses. There have been zero reported incidents of injury, none. This has been a grassroots project from the beginning. As much as I would love for the mayor to play disc golf, he is not a disc golfer. As far as I know, he's thrown a disc golf disc once. It was a great pro. This project was not brought to the city by the Department of Public Works. This was a grassroots effort. Myself and Mr. McLean in the back have been working on this project for many, many years. Alex started in 2016. I came on board in 2017. This is not a project that has been put through the process without pressure from others. We have followed every rule that the City of Nashua put forth in front of us.
30 seconds.
When they told us to work with the Conservation Commission, we did. When they asked us to go to the Board of Public Works for permission, we did. Alderman O'Brien sits on the Board of Public Works as his, as the liaison to this board. For any member of this board to claim that our project has been done in the cloak of darkness is wrong. There, there is no public funding being spent on this project. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Remarks by members of the board.
There's another person that wants to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on, come on up. Thank you, Alderman Jettie. I didn't, I didn't see him.
Sorry, I'm Alex McLean.
Name and address for the record?
47 William Street. Mr. Smart said 2016. I've actually been pushing this since 2015. Year ahead. I just wanted to come in and speak a little bit about, we already have progress being made on the course itself. We're just about maybe halfway done. We have been working with the Conservation Committee. And, you know, we went to, we had nine Board of Public Works meetings over the last few years. And it's been a long process. And to say that we haven't gone the process is hard sometimes here. So I just wanted to touch base on that to at least give you guys a little bit of an update. And I'm not gonna, I have more stuff to go over, but Mr. Smart already hit most of them on the head for me. So I will, I'll make it short and sweet. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, remarks by members of the board. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you very much. I will be brief. Earlier tonight, we talked about Court Street. I do appreciate all the people coming out again. One person made a comment about make sure you do the right thing or something to that sort. As far as I know, there is nothing in front of this alderman to do anything about Court Street. We did it a few weeks ago. We passed a trust fund. That's done. It's in the rearview. And I think the conversations that we had were all very good. I will say, I think there are some hard conversations that need to be had about Court Street. And I look forward to having them because all of these organizations that use the building deserve a great building, a safe building. A building that is, maybe offers a lot of competition for people to come in and vie for more office space, stage space and whatnot. So I look forward to having those harder conversations about how we get Court Street not even profitable, but maybe at a break-even level. So again, I do appreciate that. And I remind everybody on this board, I want the same outcomes that you all do. I just want to make sure that we start to have those conversations. Secondly, on disc golf, that is in Robey Park, which is now in Ward 9. It wasn't when I got elected, but it is now. Thank you to whoever did that. So I will say that a lot of people are concerned about it. And as this alderman, his email box is filled about concerns. And I listened to the concerns. And I went back and I watched every meeting. And I also know that there was an ask by one of the members of Board of Public Works to have a public hearing, and that was denied. As the Chairwoman of the Conservation Committee told me, the parks belong to the people. So I want to make sure that as we go through this, that we are as transparent as possible, just to cut down on my email volume, but to make sure that people are being heard and that everything moves ahead properly. Thanks.
Alderman Cleaver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to address two comments that were made. We have two bills that will be going forward. One is the, I'm not quite sure I like the title of it. It's called the Animals in the Park prohibition type thing. There's been a lot of talk on, on social media, and I think it's just confusion. They, they read the, that one line and they're not reading the body of it. This is nothing more than a clarification of existing ordinance. And the existing ordinance basically says those parks that already prohibit dogs and horses, we're changing it to pets. And the reason for it is when it was originally written, the exotic pets that exist today didn't exist then. But we'll discuss that in, in, in committee. I just wanted to make a clarification of it, that it's, it's not what much of the public believes it is. We are not banning dogs or pets from Mine Falls or Greeley Park or Robey Park, only those where they're already prohibited. And as far as the Greeley Park Advisory Group, that was brought forward by the, the, a separate group called Friends of Greeley Park. And I don't really believe that it was necessarily because of the, the, this property sale next to it. But I think what it did was it brought awareness, when people started talking, that there's some things that could be done with Greeley Park as far as cleanup and so on, and that the city just doesn't have the time. And I did want to just touch really quickly on disc golf. I wasn't going to. It's not my ward. But because all of our mailboxes are completely filled with these conversations, I did reach out to Public Works and I, and I did learn that, that the bittersweet, or some people I think refer to it as bitter root, is what was killing a lot of those trees. And I can tell you from having Greeley Park in my, my ward, there's a portion of Greeley Park down by where the ballparks are. People can't really walk through that area. That was very similar to the wooded area within Robey Park. This is actually going through cleaning it, making it more usable. So we're actually increasing the public space and the public usage of that, which I, I was really glad to hear. Trees will remain in there because that is all part of the disc golf course. So we're not going to clear cut. It's not going to look like a golf course, and it is not golf. I, I wish they didn't use the word golf. That kind of gives a, a, a misnomer of, of the whole thing. But I, you know, I know it was, it was, there was a direct attack on myself and the mayor as, how can you be for this when you didn't want anything to be harmed in Greeley Park? Well, the truth is, I do want not harm in Greeley Park, but I'd love to see something go in there and clean up all that wood so we can use more trails down that way, and even the portion that I was trying to protect as well. We have a lot of fallen trees, but we have Public Works that only has so much time on their hands. So I think this project is great because it's going to clean out all that and it's going to make more usable community space. So I just want to have that. And I was quite, I heard it from Public Works as well that there were no reported injuries in the 71 courses that already exist in New Hampshire. So that was a really good thing to hear. And at that, oh, one more thing. On Saturday, two more things actually. On Saturday, there will be a cleanup. It's not, I'm not the one who started. It's called the Litter Crew. We'll be cleaning up Greeley Park. They do many other parks throughout the city, actually through Merrimack and so on. And they will be meeting, and hopefully I will be there too. It's going to be a beautiful day, 10 o'clock over by the band show. And to, to Scott, Alderman Thomas has put together, and we, we have been collecting funds to date. I know that I've raised $175. It's not a lot of money, but I plan on being there and walking along Alderman Lopez. And I know my husband is going to try to join if his health is, is well, but we will be there to do that one mile walk. And if all is good, I'm bringing my greyhounds along with me, so.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a few things, a couple announcements and such. I do want to follow up with regards to the Save Women's Sports Flag. I see here, well, it was actually pointed out to me by a constituent, several constituents, a lot of constituents, that the Satanic Temple has just asked Boston to fly their flag after the Supreme Court ruling. And I've had, maybe through you to the mayor, Mr. Mayor, I've had many, many people in this city that have approached me to say that the Satanic flag needs to fly with the Save Women's Sports Flag in the city because they are so closely related together. And these aren't my words. These are the words of my constituents, and I just want to share them with you, that it might be a good idea, and symbolically, to have these two flags flying together as they are so closely related. I'm a God fearing Catholic. I can't stand on the side of the Satanic Temple. But thankfully, people like Miss Scare can lock arms with them, and I do appreciate that. And for the sake of freedom and the, and the freedom of speech for everyone around the country. Okay, all right. Other than that, there is a mental health first aid training for, right here, sponsored by the Board of Public Health. I'm sorry, the Public Health Division. That's on May 26th. The training happens from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And I think I'm a mental health trained trainer. I think that's a wonderful program that anyone, any layperson in the city can take advantage of. And you don't have to be a clinician. You don't have to be even in healthcare. Anyone here can join and become a first aid mental health provider. Second. Oh, yes, it's upstairs in the auditorium. Second, there's the First Annual Nashua High School South Baseball Home Runs and Hot Rods Car Show. That is this Saturday, May 14th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And that's at Nashua High School South, 36 Riverside Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. Encourage everyone to check that out. They have a hockey stick from Bruins star, maybe Alderman Sullivan can help me.
Pasternak.
Pasternak. That would be on the raffle. I think everyone should take advantage of that. My company has also donated a Hayward's ice cream gift certificate to be raffled off as well. And lastly, I just want to express my thoughts and prayers to my father-in-law. He had a very intense major surgery, two days of surgery. Had a tumor removed from his carotid artery that, essentially they said, probably not going to make it, but he may. And he's in recovery up at Dartmouth right now. And I'm, I'm glad that my, my children didn't have the, at the moment, experience losing two grandfathers in a single year. And, you know, I just want to thank the people at Dartmouth for the great surgery that they did. And I, one, one thing before he told me, he told me before he went into surgery, which is touching. I'll try not to be as emotional as Alderman Kathy was a couple of weeks ago about his grandfather-in-law. But he, he came up to me and he said, I want you to know, you're the only Democrat other than JFK that I've ever voted for. What an honor to be compared to JFK. And I do appreciate that. Many people know that, well, not maybe the public, but he's represented by Alderman Como, which he was very happy to vote for in the last city election. And I appreciate that he gave me his vote and told me that before he went into his major surgery. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Lopez.
I want to wish Alderman Kelly and any other alderman who might be recovering from COVID-19 a speedy recovery. This Sunday, the Gate City Running Festival is going to be on Main Street at 11:00. I might be a little in over my head with what I registered for, but it should be a good time to see some runners out there. I just wanted to announce and invite anybody to attend. Just be cautious of the traffic. And then, as Alderman Cle mentioned, with regards to Scott McCullough, I know he was in for public comment earlier in the Best Buddies Walk. I just wanted to announce that we, like, I'm organizing a team. Alderman Cle and her husband are both on the team. I've invited all of the aldermen to join my team, but we could also probably join Scott's team. I have reached out to the administrator because team is really just an electronic page to see if we can all be shuffled over to Scott's team. So I will be in touch with the board shortly so that any donations that we're collecting on Scott's behalf can be fairly attributed to Scott so that he can get his earbuds, but also because he's raising awareness of a great cause. He seems like a guy that I'd be happy to walk with, and I'm sure many of the other aldermen agree as well. So I will try to send an email out updating everybody as to where that stands. Anybody who's interested in joining whatever team I'm on, I have the link on my website, on my Facebook page if anybody wants to join. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things. I did want to address Court Street. I wanted to thank everybody that came out tonight to tell us a little bit about the different things that go on in that building and the different organizations that use it. I want to say that I agree with Alderman Sullivan. I would love to have serious discussions on that building. And I would love for it eventually to be able to break even as far as the income coming into it. But with the understanding that, you know, not every building in the city does that. In fact, most of them don't. Our police department, our fire departments, our schools, City Hall, any number of buildings, most of them are a drain on the budget for various reasons, very, very good reasons. This is a situation where we might be able to recoup some of the, the drain, if you will. But it's not a non-starter for me if this building continues to lose money. Because I think that it's important to understand that its purpose. And I think that we really understood that better tonight by hearing the different organizations that are in that building that benefit from it. And these are organizations that really support the arts community in, in not only Nashua, but greater Nashua, Southern New Hampshire. And I think anything that we can do to make that building better for them and do it in a way that where we can recoup some of the costs, I think is a, a good thing going forward. And so I look forward to working with all of my colleagues on that in the future. And then one last thing, Scott McCullough, thank you for calling, calling me out. I gotta say, you're probably one of the, the best fundraisers there that, that I've seen. So don't worry. I, I will get in touch with Alderman Lopez and I will give you a donation as well. I can't do the walk, but I do wish you all the best and, and luck with that. And you have my support going forward, buddy. All right. Take care.
Okay, Alderman Dow.
Just very briefly, the light, new light at Penetrauk Middle School on Madison Street had some issues that have been fixed now. It's a temporary light, so it's not the state-of-the-art equipment that we're putting in shortly. The gas fault has been moved by the gas company. So the widening of the street, the travel lanes and the turn lanes and the new traffic light, work will be starting extremely soon, and it will take into June, July before it's all completed. But then everything will work correctly, or I'm going to make sure it does.
Alderman Kathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciated the, the people that came in and spoke about the Court Street building. I know that they want their building, and I don't necessarily disagree with having the building. I just, as we spoke about it before, I just disagree with that particular route with the trust fund being built. I think it could be done a different way, and I think we need a plan that has a little more clarity, vision and focus on what we're doing with that building rather than, you know, just a trust fund. As far as the disc golf course goes, I think part of the problem, and I've expressed this to some other people, is I'm not against or for golf, disc golf. If they have it, great, I'll play. If they don't, I'm not going to ask for one. Doesn't, doesn't matter to me personally. I think the struggle is, when you go back and read some of those meetings, when the course designer was saying, we're going to limb some trees and we're going to do this and we're going to do that. I think that had a lack of clarity about what actually was going to happen. Now, I'm not saying it was on purpose. I'm not saying any of that. I'm just saying the public is seeing a disparity between what was said and what is happening. And that deserves a little more clarification. And I know through talking to Director Sullivan, that there's going to be, I think the Conservation Commission is going to come in and look at things. I don't know the whole process with that. So I do think, I'm not saying we need a public hearing, but I do think there needs to be more clarity about what's going on with disc golf and what happened. I've gotten a lot of complaints about it. Some of them are legitimate, some of them are not. I think some people don't understand the process. We don't have to notify butters. Site plans are handled at a planning board level. BPW is not, that's not what they do. I'm not saying that's the best way to do it. I'm just saying that's how the city runs. So there's no in-the-dark cloak thing. It's just a process, and I love process. This is just how we do it. And now we've got to sort of clarify a few things, which is fine. I, I don't think, I don't think in the end it'll be a problem. We just need to get ahead of this. Are we going to have a special meeting for the million-dollar contract thing that we need to have to do by May 23rd? Do anyone know? You don't have to answer that right now, but I heard the May 23rd and I was like, we're going to pick up the pace. Anyway. Thanks, Scott, for also calling me out because I've been meeting email Alderman Lopez about the Best Buddies Walk. I just trying to figure out if I had time in my schedule to make it up to Concord and do the walk because I, I really like to do the walk for Best Buddies, and if not, I'll, I'll definitely donate some money to, to the cause. And then, lastly, I don't know if, I know that the citizen flagpole part of the website is down. I don't know what that means. I've been asked about it, so I would appreciate clarity from the mayor's office about, is it going to continue? Is it not going to continue? What are we doing in light of the Supreme Court case? I think there are some people that I would like to know, you know, what way, what way we're heading. I don't have an opinion on that right now, but I think that there is definitely some clarity that people, that citizens would like about whether it's going to continue, whether it's not going to continue, and that whole rigmarole. On the subject of the flagpole, I find it interesting, actually, you know what? I'm going to save that. I'm going to save that. Not the time. Sorry. And yeah, that's it. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Alderman Tivo.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of things. I do also want to thank Scott. Fortunately, on that day, I'll be, I'll be coaching a baseball game in the morning, so I won't be able to attend. But I'm more than happy to get some money over to Mr. Lopez and to, to get that to you. Thank you for speaking. I really appreciate that. You know, also thank you to Mr. Smart and Mr. McLean. I know I've seen Mr. McLean on both social media and on email, and I know he's, you know, fighting off the brunt of some of the more avid anti-golf, disc golf people out there. And, you know, there is a lot of myths out there, and I think Mr. Smart really came up today. I wish some of the other people that were against it were here so they could, you know, maybe compare a little bit. But I thought he was really good at, at kind of dispelling some of the myths that were out there. The big one being that our mayor is an avid disc golfer because there's a video of him throwing one, not so well. But, you know, that's a myth.
Went about 30 feet. That idea that it was a good throw was ridiculous.
The, the other piece of that, you know, I heard the myth too that the disc golf store that went up over there was the reason why the, the course was there. It's the other way around. The store went there because the golf course is going to be there. Disc golf is not golf, so any ordinance that says that, golf is not disc golf. We can have disc golf in parks. You know, I compare it to polo and water polo. Just because the word's in it doesn't mean it's the same. You know, when I came on to be alderman-elect, I met with DPW, and that was one of the things. At that time, it was going to be in my ward. And I'm very gracious that the clerk has taken it out of my ward, even though I love that park. But I hear Alderman Sullivan, I see that the emails that we all get together. And I thought everything was done by the book. I don't think there was any cover of darkness. I'm not a disc golfer, so I'm not speaking from experience there, but I, I think that, you know, they did a great job. And I hope people look at that and see what both of them said today. I really appreciate that. Senior Center real quick. If anybody has any issues with that, the money that we put towards the senior center, I really wish that you guys would go take a tour if you haven't. I was able to take a tour a couple of weeks ago, and I thought it was worthwhile to see what they do. Dan Fredette's on the board. He was there, and so was Alderwoman Karen, or Alderwoman Karen. Court Street. So I felt today, I didn't even know why we had a presentation. I was wondering why they were, they were here. I felt they were almost here to beg for what they do there. And I felt kind of bad for them that they had to come and actually almost, I don't know if they're seeing it or feeling it on social media, or feeling out there that people want to get rid of arts or get rid of that building or, or what. But, you know, like I said earlier, we need arts in the city. Everybody that's doing something, liquid therapy is, is a great business to have there. I thought he spoke, Mr. Trembley spoke great about what they've done for the city. And finally, the flagpole. I mean, if someone that wants to put a Nazi flag, do we put it up? Because we have to put every flag up. You know, the citizen, we don't have to have a citizen flagpole. No one says we have to have one. You know, I thought that was something that probably started out for goodwill. And to put anything up there that might offend someone, and I don't mean just offend somebody a little bit, but offend who someone is, is wrong. It's just wrong. Why would we do it? We wouldn't put that up against any kind of other group, so why? So why would we put something up there that is hateful towards the trans community? I think that's just wrong. There are citizens, too, just like anyone else, just like we are. So, you know, I don't know what to do about that, but that's it. Thank you.
Mayor, did you want to address that?
So I will, yes. The Supreme Court basically said that there are two ways that a community can go. Number one, you open it to anyone and everyone, which means the Nazi flag, the hammer and sickle, the, you know, the Venezuelan whatever, you know. Number two, you can control the message. The city can control the message and say, "We're not flying anything. We're flying only messages that we approve." And so we have decided to adopt the second approach. We're not going to fly the hammer and sickle. We're not going to fly President Putin's whatever he wants. We are going to fly a limited number of flags. We really changed the policy immediately after the one flag was removed. But that's been done more explicitly now. And so Ukrainian flag, the Irish flag, the Greek flag, the pride flag, that's an event that we support, the Pride Parade. But other flags, political flags that have political messages, other messages that really are not, in our judgment, appropriate, will not be allowed. So mostly national flags, recognizing national heritages, Dominican flag, Dominican independence, Greek independence. And the, there's a policy now that is written and makes that clear.
Okay.
Just have one question.
Okay, I'll go to Alderman Moran and then Alderman Cathy.
Cathy Moran. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your administration, for taking such a hard line against communism and anti-LGBTQ messaging. I do appreciate that on behalf of my constituents. Thank you.
Alderman Cathy?
Just had a question. The policy that you've now adopted, is that going to be known to the public? Or would it be they submit it, and then you make a decision on the flag after it's been requested?
Correct. Now, there is a written policy, which may already be on the website, but will soon be if it's not. And there's a new application that makes all this clear. And so, yes, you will have to apply and be approved before you can fly the flag. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, committee announcements. Nothing? We're not meeting again? Pretty amazing. Alderman Dowd?
I think we already said, there's a budget meeting Monday to 16th, I guess, is it right? And that's Administrative Services. And we'll be having numerous, everybody on the Budget Committee should have the list of the meetings. Those are going to be working sessions, formally because we have a forum. It's a meeting, but it's only going to be a working session. It's your opportunity to ask the division directors and their departments the questions you have relative to their budget. You only get one bite at the apple, because we don't bring them back. So I ask you to review the sections before the meeting, so you can ask questions that you might have.
Any further committee announcements? Alderman Cathy?
Not necessarily a committee announcement, but just a reminder to the public that there's another parking study being done on Wednesday, the 11th, at 6:00 p.m., right?
6:30.
6:30. I couldn't remember the email if it was one way or the other. 6:30 in the auditorium upstairs. If you'd like to participate, you can either do it in person or on Zoom.
Alderman Moran?
On Tuesday, May 17th, the Planning and Economic Development Committee will be holding a public hearing to amend the zoning map by rezoning lands situated north and south of Lake Street and west of Pine Street from local businesses to local business with mixed use overlay district, followed by a joint meeting of Economic Development Committee and the Committee on Infrastructure.
Okay, I just have a reminder, well, not a reminder, just wanted to mention that the Board of Aldermen Group photo will take place at our next meeting, before our next meeting, on May 24th. I hope no one has a conflict.
I'm actually trying to grow a beard, so I need more time.
And do we know what time, Donna?
I mean, 6:30.
6:30, okay. Thank you, everyone. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Aldermen go into a non-public.
I'm sorry, no need for that. No need.
There's no need? Well, then I get a better motion, Madam President, if you may. A motion to adjourn this evening's automatic meeting. By roll call, please.
Motion is to adjourn. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Como?
An enthusiastic yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Goveya?
Yes.
Alderman Cathy?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Mousher?
Yes.
We have 13 yeas and one nae.
And we are adjourned at 9:30, 2:00 p.m. Thank you, everyone.